Township Edison Zoning Board of Adjustment, Special Meeting of January 28, 2025 is now in session. Adequate notice to this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act of 1975, as provided by the annual notice published in the Home News and Tribune on December 13, 2024, as opposed to the main lobby of municipal complex on December 18, 2024. Please join me in flagging Mr. The Flag.
Flagging Mr. The Flag. The United Republic of Republicans stands one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Obera. Mr. Bignell.
Here.
Ms. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Ayat.
Here.
Mr. Chabra.
Here.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Sadara.
Here.
Vice Chair O'Gorman.
Here.
And Chairman Kumba.
Here.
Madam Secretary, minutes for consideration?
January 21, 2025, minutes of approval.
What's the board's pleasure?
I can make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting for January 21, 2025.
Motion made by Vice Chairman O'Gorman, seconded by Mr. Sadara. Roll call, please.
Mr. Chabra.
Yes, the motion.
Mr. Patel.
Yes, to the motion.
Mr. Sadara.
Yes, to the motion.
Vice Chair O'Gorman.
Yes.
And Chairman Kumba.
Yes, on the motion. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a special meeting of the Edison Township Zoning Board of Adjustment. This board is composed of Edison Township residents appointed by the Municipal Council, who volunteer their time and service to the board. The municipal land use law requires that members successfully complete a land use training course administered by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. This board also holds in-house training conducted by our board professionals. The zoning board abides by the provisions of the municipal land use law, in addition to our board's bylaws. The zoning board is a quasi judicial land use board, which differs from the Township Planning Board. Under the municipal land use law, board members are required to be impartial and are not allowed to discuss any case prior to be considered at a hearing. All applicants will have the opportunity to present their case before the board, along with the opportunity for board members and board professionals to question the applicant and their witnesses. At the conclusion of the applicant's presentation of their case, the case will be open to the public. Residents within 200 feet of the subject property will be heard, followed by residents from outside of 200 feet. All residents will be sworn in, they'll provide their name and address, and they'll be given six minutes to comment on the application being considered without the opportunity for rebuttal. Residents may ask questions of the applicant, the applicant's professionals, and board professionals. The board requests that these questions are asked prior to any commentary being made on the application. Once a commentary begins, the residents' timer will begin. The applicant will be allowed the opportunity for cross-examination of their witnesses. Under the law, the chair is allowed to stop any commentary which is repetitive or an attempt to filibuster the board. Further, the chair is allowed to stop any commentary that is irrelevant to the case or prohibited from the board's consideration. Once the public portion is closed, all public comments are ended unless new testimony is presented by the applicant. Following the closure of the public portion, the applicant will have the right of summation on their application. Following summation, the case will go to the board for a decision. This procedure has been followed by the board and is similar to procedures followed by boards of adjustment statewide. The municipal land use law requires the board to engage in a balancing act and is not required to strictly apply township ordinances, zoning plan, or master plan. As a board of adjustment, variances are granted when appropriately necessary, following all legal considerations. As has been the case with prior boards, this board will see where we're at if we are still in session around 10:30 PM. I ask that all applicants, professionals, and residents show respect to each other and be civil throughout all proceedings. I ask that you withhold applause, booing, or interrupting of anyone while they are speaking. The chair will not tolerate any outbursts by applicants, professionals, or the public. Further, since most cases are being recorded by a court reporter, I ask the speakers do not speak over one another. Madam Secretary, first case on the agenda, please.
Case number Z22, 2024, congregation Avath Isreal, 1587 Lincoln Highway. Applicant is seeking bulk and use variances to construct a one-story addition to the existing synagogue for a new sanctuary with lobby. Standards have not been met in accordance with the master plan. Front yard setback required is 30 feet, proposed is 10 feet. Max lot width required is 100 feet, proposed is 75. Max FAR required is .25, proposed is .43. Affected property is located in the GB zone designated as block number 81, lot number 1.01 on the Edison Township tax map. All noticing paperwork is in order.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. Warren Fink, I'm the attorney on behalf of the synagogue. And you might hear reference to the synagogue as AY, which is the way it's commonly referred to as the community. I think most of the notice has been ably noted. I would just note that the plan is they're seeking approval of preliminary and final site plan to allow the construction of a one-story, 5,572 square foot addition to the existing synagogue, which would include a new sanctuary and lobby. So we have all our professionals here. This is a growing congregation, and I would first like to present before the professionals the Rabbi of the synagogue, Rabbi Gadalia Jaffe, who's going to testify first and lay out the basics, basic facts of the application, which is that this is a growing congregation consisting of approximately, I believe it's 51 full members and 23 associate members. And the Rabbi will leave it to him to give you the details, but he'll testify considering the typical attendance so that he can explain to the board that the synagogue, that AY is a walking synagogue, that since AY is an Orthodox Jewish synagogue, and as the Rabbi will explain, driving is strictly forbidden on the Jewish Sabbath and Jewish holidays. Just about everyone walks to synagogue since they can't drive in order to attend services. So I would ask, without further delay, that Rabbi Jaffe come up, please.
Mr. Fink, you can use the table over here. You can get comfortable, use the table, there's an extra microphone there. Absolutely, thank you very much. Rabbi, you could join him at the table as well.
Rabbi, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I promise to tell the truth.
Okay, and state your full name for the record, please.
Gadalia Jaffe.
If I may proceed?
No objection.
Thank you. Rabbi, how long have you been the Rabbi of the synagogue?
I've had the privilege of serving as the Rabbi since 2008.
And do you know how long AY has been operating at the current site?
The synagogue has been at the current site since the year 2006.
And what are the typical activities that occur at AY?
We have prayer services. We have learning sessions, and we have occasional social events for our members.
And what happens, what do you mean? If you could just explain to the board what the learning sessions mean?
Classes dealing with Jewish texts that are thousands of years old. We have about usually 10 to 15 people who attend these classes.
Okay. And what's the approximate membership of the synagogue?
I believe the current membership is 51 full-time members and 23 associate members.
And if you could please describe for the board the various prayer gatherings that occur at the synagogue during the week and what the usual attendance is?
On our Sunday morning prayer services, we have approximately 15 people who come. On a Sunday morning, they start at 8:30, last about one hour. And then on Sunday afternoon, around twilight time, we have afternoon and evening prayer services together. Again, approximately 15 people come to those as well. During the week, we have our morning prayer service at 6:30, Monday through Friday, logic of less than one hour. And then this time, we have an evening service at 8:30, which lasts about 15 minutes. And these, again, have approximately 15 people in attendance.
Okay, what about attendance on the Jewish Sabbath?
The Sabbath begins Friday at sundown. Most people live within walking distance of our synagogue. Those who live a little bit farther will drive, park their cars in the nine parking spots that are there. We've always had sufficient parking. And then we pray for about one hour on Friday afternoon. And then in the morning, as was mentioned, it's an Orthodox Jewish synagogue where nobody drives, everybody walks. We have anywhere between 40 to 75 people at our main prayer service, which is 9 o'clock. We have about 15 to 20 people who come to our early morning service, which is at 6:45 AM. And then in the afternoon, people come back again, everybody walks, nobody's driving on the Sabbath. And we have about 15 to 20 people for our afternoon-evening services. And then after the Sabbath is over, on a Saturday night, people either walk or drive home.
So your testimony is that there are sufficient parking spots with the current nine spots when people come for the relatively fewer amount of people who drive to the synagogue on Friday afternoon before the Sabbath begins?
Yes, there's enough parking spots, as I mentioned, because the people who live close by will walk to the synagogue, a little bit farther away will drive there, but there's always been adequate parking with the nine spots. In the new plan, which is calling for 11 parking spots, we assume that'll be the same status quo, there'll be adequate parking for the number of people attending the services.
Okay, and is it pretty much the same situation with Jewish holidays?
Jewish holidays follow the exact same model as the Sabbath, where it's strictly forbidden to operate, to drive in a car. So the same model where people will either walk or will drive to the synagogue before the Sabbath holiday begins, and then leave their cars there in the parking lot, and then drive home afterwards.
Okay, and what about Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, which are known to be days where possibly more people attend services? Does it still, does that affect the parking situation at all?
Those are large services. If they're not parking on the actual parking lot, they might be on the street parking.
But do more people, would you say somewhat more people?
More people do come on Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, which are the...
That's not describing though, there's more people.
As far as driving, it's probably slightly higher.
Okay. Are there any operations on the property during the week?
No, there's no schools in our synagogue. It's for services I mentioned in the morning and at the nighttime.
And, okay, that's basically it. Are there any questions for the Rabbi?
Is the board having any questions for the Rabbi?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman.
So you don't have any learning sessions during the week?
The learning sessions, there's no classes there. Two nights a week, we have the 10 to 15 people who stay for our evening prayers at 8:30. We have a class for them on Monday nights and Wednesday nights.
What are the social events?
I'm glad you asked. We have chopped, you know, like the cooking competition? We did that once. We did a wine tasting event. It's just things for people to get together and socialize. They're not really religious in nature, but just it's a place to create camaraderie.
Do those occur on the Sabbath?
No, these are weekday events.
And what's the usual attendance of those kind of events?
We can get excess of 30 people sometimes for that.
Do they drive or do they walk?
Depends how close they live to the synagogue.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Rabbi? Okay, thank you very much, Rabbi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. So that being concluded, I would now call Adnan Khan, the engineer, to review the plans.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And state your full name for the record.
Adnan Khan, A-D-N-A-N-K-H-A-N.
Mr. Khan, you've appeared before us prior, but if you could just please provide the board with a brief summary of your background and qualifications?
Sure. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, master's degree in construction management from NGIT, professional engineer in multiple states, testified in front of federal court, superior court, hundreds of boards throughout New Jersey, and in front of this board in the past.
Great.
And all my licenses are current.
Excellent, thank you so much. We'll accept you, you may proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Khan, if you could describe the general plan to the board, please?
The board wants to see the plan, should I bring the easel here?
So you could take the easel if you want to set it up over there, and then also, excuse me, just bring the microphone with you.
Mr. Khan, just for the record, those are the same plans that were already previously submitted with the application, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as you heard from the Rabbi, it's existing synagogue, and we are proposing in addition to the existing synagogue. The property is located in GB, General Business District. There are some bulk requirements, some of them are pre-existing, some variances that are listed on the application, and there are some new variances that will be requested by the applicant. I'm going to quickly go over those variances, but of course, we have Mr. Chadwick here to present his planning testimony. The pre-existing variance is as the lot width, existing is 100 feet required, and we are 75 feet. This is the existing lot configuration, which we won't be able to change because that's the lot size that is available. The other pre-existing variance is the front yard for the principal building, 38 feet is required. The existing synagogue is 10 feet, and we are proposing the same setback for the addition, as well as keeping the existing building. The new variances will be the rear yard, variance that we are seeking, 15 feet is required, and, sorry, 25 feet is required, and we are proposing 20.65, so we are slightly short on the dimension. Building coverage, 25% is required, we are at 43.38%, so that's a variance we require. And the FAR, .25 is allowed, and we are at .43. So those are the variances that we are requesting. In addition, we are requesting a parking variance. Based on the size of the addition in the existing synagogue, the requirement for the parking based on the land use requirement of the Edison Township, we need 52 parking spaces. Let's see, let me just confirm that. 50 spaces. And we are proposing 11 spaces. And I'm going to go over, once I go to the existing condition, as to what is existing and how we are proposing the new parking layout. So that is in a sense, and there are some design waivers, design deviations of minor nature that we are seeking, and of course, Mr. Chadwick is here to go over those. Existing site, there is an existing building to the eastern property, first of all, the lot. There are two lots, and the lot is a corner lot at the intersection of Lincoln Highway and Campbell Avenue. The existing synagogue is on the southeastern section of the lot. Fronting, what I counted is like seven to eight parking spaces, but Rabbi mentioned nine spaces. There are spaces that you can park nine cars, but they are all substandard parking spaces. They are not designated at the proper dimensions that exist. And then we have a big or a long depressed curb along Campbell Avenue that provides direct access to all these eight or nine parking spaces in front of the building. And Campbell Avenue is very close to the intersection, so in my opinion, it's not a very safe condition that currently exists at the property. Because as soon as you turn from Lincoln Highway, in order to enter the parking, you have to make immediate right. So what we are proposing is, we are keeping the existing building and adding an addition. Doing so, we are making the vehicle circulation and vehicle movement more efficient and much safer. We moved the driveway from right at the intersection, we moved it all the way to the other end of the parking lot, which is the northern end. So the entire depressed curb in the front will be all constructed as a full height. So the entrance is like if anybody's entering the parking lot, they have to drive about 300, 400 feet before they can enter into the driveway. So we are making it much safer based on this proposed layout. Again, the requirement, as Rabbi explained in his testimony, the need and how many people use this in different prayer services. In our opinion, the 11 spaces is more than what currently exists at the property, and they will serve the community well based on their operations at the facility. What we are also proposing is we are proposing two handicap spaces, van-accessible handicap spaces. Currently, there is no designated handicap space at the property. So we are complying with the federal requirement to provide two handicap accessible, and then we have nine spaces. The addition of the building, and our architect will go over in detail, we are keeping the existing building and adding to the building towards west and north. However, as I mentioned, there are variances, the 10 feet requirement for the front yard, that's an existing variance, we are keeping in line, the addition is in line with the existing buildings, we are not exacerbating that variance. The side yard is the pinch point, where it is right next to the building to the east, so that is a variance that we are seeking. In addition to these improvements, we are also proposing a very comprehensive landscaping plan. Actually, before I go to landscaping, I want to explain like, currently, the property doesn't have any stormwater managed, and property is very flat. So any rain event that happens, it's just surface runoff either toward the property to the north or towards Campbell Street, and ultimately to the drainage system on Campbell Street. So it's undetained runoff. What we are proposing as part of this project is, we are proposing detention basin, underground infiltration basin, in compliance with the township requirement and the DPP requirement. What this detention basin is going to do, it's going to capture all the roof runoff from the existing building and the proposed building, and divert all that roof runoff into the infiltration basin, which will help the infiltration of the groundwater, and, I mean, infiltration into the soils and replenish the groundwater. The same thing, we are proposing some inlets that will capture the runoff from the paved area into the system. So all the runoff that will be generated on-site will be handled on-site through this infiltration on stormwatered system. So that's our stormwater that we are proposing. As I mentioned, we are proposing landscaping lighting improvements as well. If you check the plans, we are proposing shade trees along Campbell Avenue and one shade tree along Lincoln Highway. In addition, we have a combination of deciduous and evergreen trees throughout the site, as well as some shrubs along the building, along the addition of the new building as a foundational landscaping. In addition, we are proposing lighting design, all these light fixtures are LED-type light fixtures, downward throw, fully cut off, in compliance with the township ordinance, and we are meeting the requirements for the lighting as required. What else, if I miss anything? Garbage, we are also proposing a trash enclosure. Again, the garbage will be on the day of collection. It will be either put to the curb, where the garbage truck will come and pick it up, and that's how the garbage will be handled from the site.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bignell?
I have a question, the fencing, can you just show the limits of the fencing on the property? The eight-foot fence?
Yes, we are showing the eight-foot fence.
Show where it is on the...
Okay. Okay. We are showing a proposed eight-foot high fence along the eastern property line and along the northern property line, up to the front yard.
Where does it start on the bottom?
It starts in the bottom at the pinch point, actually, it starts behind the addition. It runs through the east along eastern property line, and it ends up here.
And what's to the right of the property line? Where your finger is, what's there?
There's an existing structure, existing building.
What kind of building, what's used there?
It's a retail commercial building, yes, yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's not a residential, yes. It's always a retail residential, retail commercial building. So that's what the fence is, and trash enclosure, I talked about it, landscaping. Again, this driveway that we are proposing along Campbell will be a two-way, full access in and out. So it will give us full access, and it's much safer than what currently exists at the site. That's what I have for now, I'll take that. Any questions?
Okay, so we'll go to the board and see if they have any questions for Mr. Khan.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add something?
Absolutely, Mr. Fink.
I gave to Ms. Rugiero, and she was leaving for Ms. Shaw. I sent abutting letters at the end of November, November 29th, to the three abutting neighbors, and didn't hear back from any of them.
Okay, Ms. Shaw?
And Mr. Khan, may I just ask you, have you had the opportunity to review the October 28, 2024 report from DNR Engineering?
Yes, I did.
And is the applicant able to comply with the report?
Yes, we can, yes, we will.
Thank you.
Mr. Obera?
I would agree with the applicant engineer's assessment that relocating the driveway access improves the safety at that intersection. He has touched on a number of the comments in Mr. Carley's letter as part of his testimony. There's a few minor engineering items that he's agreed to provide, so hearing that, we have no exception.
Excellent. Mr. Bignell, we'll go to the Bignell Planning Report.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, they spoke about a few of the things on my report, but are you agreeing to all my comments? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
All right, so I asked for an irrigation system so the landscaping survives?
I have to check with that with the...
Well, that's why I'm asking the questions, we get to decide that. You want to go through one at a time, would that be easier? All right, so the first one, you need to provide the outside agencies, I'm sure you'll do that, any exemptions. You already spoke with Bee about what the operation is, the parking, number of congregations, you already addressed that. We talked about the buffer. The irrigation system, we asked you to do that to maintain the landscaping so it doesn't die off, it kind of grows, and you take care of it, so that's something you need to provide if that's the case. Do you agree to that, or? You're okay with the irrigation system?
Yes.
Okay. The tree calculations, I have no more need to have additional trees on the property, but the ordinance is specific on what you have to apply for, and then the board grant you waiver or whatever the case may be, so that is going to have to be addressed on the plan. Yes. Okay? I think you're very close to it now, but you had to provide the calculations. Pipeline buffering, are you doing any digging on site? Because if you are, you have to provide the letters to the pipeline buffering companies, that you're not digging within 75 feet of a high-pressure main. And there are high-pressure mains along Route 27, so you have to make sure that they're not 75 pounds or greater. All right, so that's something you had to agree to.
Yes, we will, and just to let you know, like, all our new utilities are from Campbell's Avenue, we are not going towards Lincoln.
All right, but so they're not considered high-pressure, but you still have to provide the letters. So you have to apply for the letters. The secretary will give you the addresses, and they send you, they'll send you a report back saying there's no high-pressure mains, and that's a condition of approval.
We'll come live with that.
That's by ordinance, okay? And I know you spoke about the lighting. I asked it to be on a residential scale, and you said they're going to be low, they're not going to bother anybody in the neighborhood, just a low...
They are full cut off, downward throw, all these light fixtures, yes.
And any signage, do you propose any signage to the property?
Not at this time.
Nothing on the facade? Just, the reason why I ask is you should do it now, because that way, if it's all part of your site plan approval, so if you come down later and you want to put something on, you may have to go back before the board. I didn't hear what he said, but... What he said...
Mr. Fink, can you bring the microphone closer to you?
I'm speaking to Mr. Koolang, who's the co-president of the synagogue, so I think... You're allowed 10% of the front facade, so if you testify that the sign will be less than the 10% area, then you're fine, but it's on the record, then you're allowed to do it down the road.
Sorry if I may, yeah, we actually, we do provide a sign schedule, and we are proposing signs, but they are all conforming to the zoning requirements, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
Okay, so now go to the board, if the board has any questions for Mr. Fink.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairman?
Was the issue on the loading at the facility, was that addressed?
As far as any supplies and things?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's a synagogue, so the loading or the vehicles, the maximum vehicles, Yeah, I mean, it's a synagogue, so the loading or the vehicles, the maximum vehicles you can expect is like a FedEx truck or UPS type truck or delivery vans if they are catering any food. So we're not expecting any big tractor trailers or deliveries like that. And in the parking area, we have enough room where these vans, delivery vans or box trucks can easily come and park on the available space and deliver whenever they need to, yeah.
And then, Mr. Khan, the garbage collection, recycling collection, it'll just be a regular can? You're not proposing a dumpster or any sorts?
No, there will be small dumpsters depending upon how much has been generated, but it can be like, it can be a one cubic yard bin with the wheels on it. So they are easy to maneuver by one person.
Okay. And then it'll be stored inside?
Yeah, they're all in a trash enclosure with a vinyl fence around it.
Okay. Perfect. Mr. McDowell, we'll go with that? All right. You're happy, I'm happy. Excellent. All right. Any other questions, Mr. Khan? Okay. See none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would then ask, call Anthony Guzzo, the architect.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
And please state your full name for the record.
Yes. Anthony Guzzo, the firm of Guzzo Architects, 608 Ridge Road, Lynnhurst, New Jersey.
Mr. Guzzo, if you could please provide the board with summary of your background and qualifications, please?
Yes, I have a five-year bachelor's degree from New Jersey Institute of Technology. Currently a member of the AIA and National Council, N C A R B. I've been practicing architecture for over 25 years. My license is in good standing and I also hold my license in New Jersey. I have testified before this board before.
Okay. License is occurring in good standing?
Yes, they are.
All right. We'll accept you. It must be NJIT night. We're going to notify the Alumni Association.
Alumni. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Guzzo, if you could please present a basic outline of the architecture aspect of this application.
Sure. I'm just going to be putting up our exhibits, which were submitted to the board. So our drawing number P1 dated 12/17/2024, it's, it's our architectural floor plan. Just to give you a little oversight of the existing building, I know we had some site testimony, but the existing building onsite is, you know, approximately about 35 feet, 38 feet by 75. It's an existing masonry building, not very tall, about 14 feet or so. And that is currently the location that, that houses the congregation. So we had that as a starting point there. So as we were laying this out, we were really just trying to add the spaces so they can function as is, but then also leave themselves some room to grow. So that existing building is a 2,400 square foot building. So what we're looking to do here is just add approximately about 5,000 square feet, adding a true sanctuary space, space, which they don't truly have now. So we're looking to have just space with some high ceilings, approximately 2,000 square feet, but also add some functional space for them. So again, bringing the building up to code, we provided handicap accessible men and women's toilets. We have a kitchen. We have two multipurpose smaller rooms that can serve for education or some other small functions. And then the existing building will eventually be outfitted to a kiddish space, which is an overflow space after service where they get together. And so that, that will be converting the old space to that. So with that being said, the sanctuary space will be set back off of Lincoln Highway, so on the side of Campbell. So I, I think that we were very, trying to be very sensitive to the residential area that we were there, and that is reflected in the facade elevations. As we kind of wrap ourselves around, we have a couple of points of access, but really our main lobby access is off of Campbell, which is in the central part of the space and not towards the rear or residential. So basically everyone walking to this location from different directions will be kind of accessing in the middle of the building along Campbell. Just to kind of move on to our exterior elevations, I also brought with me, I'm not sure if the board has this, our rendering, which is RN 101, which really just gives a good visual depiction of the building itself. What we are trying to do on all elevations was kind of break this up into a little bit smaller portions. We tried to use subtle materials. We have a light stone that is the majority of the spaces, the sanctuary space, the corner element that we have here that has some angled roof lines and then inserted in between, which is a softer beige material, which is almost like a sandstone. It's like a cast stone. So we're just use a variety of different materials and different building elements to just give some interest along the facade. The, the building itself actually kind of follows the slight bend or angle that's in Campbell. So we think that along with some of the different varied elements along there become a very interesting building and hope to kind of clean up that space on the corner and then give the building some presence there with that corner white element with the angled roof and then just a little bit more subtle elevation as we approach down Campbell.
Do you want to mention anything about some of the modifications that were made to the plan?
Yes. You know, through some of the technical review that we did have, you know, we kind of took away some of the things, comments there and actually reduced the building size. So what we did is we were within 10 feet as a, as a side yard or front yard set back off of Campbell. That was increased to 15, so that reduced some of our square footage. But I think all in all, it was a good reduction of square footage here, I think from the visual presence and the visibility around that corner for vehicular traffic, but also having the building set back with a little bit more of a landscape buffer in between that. I think that's a nice setting for the building. So I think there was, you know, some advantages by reducing the building during our technical review committee.
Are there any questions for Mr. Guzzo?
Supportive questions, Mr. Guzzo.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman.
The McDowell Planning Consultants' report, the architect needs to provide a clearer occupancy calculations?
Yes, we will provide that. It will be, will be based on building code. We use some of that already in our plumbing calculations that we, we did for this facility, but we will provide that if needed.
Well, it's based on the parking. That's, that's the issue. From the report, have you seen this?
Yes, yes. I know that there's a square footage requirement that, that translates back into that and I'm not aware if it's directly related to occupancy.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can help.
Mr. McDowell.
Yeah, my report is, is a reflection of it. The vice chairman is correct. It's, it's calculated by the number of people in the facility. And that's why I guess when the planner gets up here, talk about the, the number of people that walk to, to services and that's, that's, that'll be part of the testimony. We need the numbers so we can lock in a number of people that are maximum at that facility. So they, once they outgrow that, they, you know, it's like a, it's a building code thing. It's not a zoning issue, but there'll be a maximum number of people that can be permitted in the building at any one time. So there's like two issues there, one's for parking, but one's to figure out the maximum numbers as well. Okay? Does that help a little bit because?
Yes, thank you. You'll comply with.
I will comply with that, yes.
Yeah, his, his is the building side. The parking is the variant side that has to come from the, from the planning's, planner's testimony. All right?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. So just to clarify, will the parking be confined to the site? And when it's overloaded, they will park in the street during your holidays? But during normal week, during course of a normal week, all the parking will be onsite?
I believe that's what the, that's what the rabbi testified to. If there is some small overflow, they would park on the street, but I don't think they've, they also still might look into something like I suggested to them, speaking to the shopping center across the street for like on weekends or evenings for overflow parking. You know, there's that mini, there's that mini mall over there, right across the street.
Yes. Okay. Do you use that, currently use that now?
No, but I've suggested to the, to the, to the board that they reach out to them to see if they can make some kind of provision along those lines for, especially as was mentioned, when they grow, hopefully.
Shall we hear the testimony first? I think you asked the question too soon, Mr. Ah. Let them provide the testimony on their walkers on Sabbath because they don't drive and they don't need the parking and there's enough parking during the week from the rabbi and has to do whatever business. So that's, that's what we did at T R C. So the board still has to hear that testimony.
Right. Well, the rabbi testified that I think on the Jewish Sabbath that there was a 50 to 75 rabbi people.
That walk.
Come and then so out of those people, they're about, they're usually the park, that the parking is sufficient.
And that's, but the planner, the planner needs to put that testimony on the record, not to interrupt you, but.
Okay.
The professional has to do that. So let's get to him and.
Okay, Mr. Chadwick is next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guzzo.
Mr. Dar. What is the hours of the operation?
The hours of operation?
Yeah.
Well, it depends on, the rabbi testified that during the week, there is a prayer gathering on the mornings at approximately 6:30 in the morning and on Sundays at 8:30 in the morning. And then on the Jewish Sabbath, when people are walking, there's a 6:45 in the morning session and also a later one at, at nine o'clock. And then there's also one about an hour before sundown and then at sundown on the Jewish Sabbath, which people are also walking to since they're not allowed to drive.
Okay. And then nobody lives on the site?
Nobody what?
Nobody lives on the site.
No, there's nobody lives on the site. And as the rabbi testified, there's no school there or any other activity during the week except for educational activities a couple of nights a week.
Parking requirements do change.
Right, right, right.
And then you have a full-fledged kitchen over there?
Excuse me?
Kitchen?
There.
You cook food over there?
Well, I think there's a small current kitchen, but the, the plan calls, I would have to ask the rabbi, he's more familiar with the plans, or maybe we could ask Mr. Koolang to step up. He's the president, if you want to swear him in.
You could approach, sir.
Microphone's over there.
As part of.
Hold on, hold on, please.
Sorry.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I.
And state your full name for the record if you want to hold a microphone.
Jay Koolang.
I'm sorry, Jay.
I'm co-president of Abbeis Israel.
C U L A N G.
And Mr. Koolang, you've been asked about the, what the kitchen situation is both currently and as per the plan. So if you could kindly respond to the board member's question.
Currently, we, we really have no kitchen. We have a space that we use for, we have refrigerators, we have no oven, no appliances other than a refrigerator and we, we really, that's why we're building to, to, you know, provide more space. We plan on in the new building, having a warming kitchen basically, which will have the ability to warm and store food and also have space to prepare, which we don't have right now really. But there's not going to be an elaborate kitchen at all, if that answers your question. Oh, and we do not cook on the Sabbath, which is sun, you know, from sundown, the previous day through sundown, the following day, there is no cooking. It's, that's why it's a warming kitchen. So we can keep things warm, we prepare them before the holiday or the Sabbath, and then we serve it on, on the Sabbath. And the best we can do is warm, warm that food.
And then that is the schedule even on the holidays as well, right?
The holidays are, are exactly like the, the trend during the practice during the Sabbath holidays. It's the same restrictions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman.
What, what appliances are in a warming kitchen? What is a warming kitchen?
Maybe it's best to have the rabbi address that question because it's, he's more familiar to, I think he'd be better able to describe the answer to that.
Rabbi, there's a microphone on the table right over.
A warming kitchen has a warming drawer. Approximately, I'm six feet tall, it's about as tall as I am, and has different slots. So put in items like a potato kugel, we'll put in there items like, if you know what chont is, it's very delicious. And it's the food that's prepared before the Sabbath begins. We insert it there, maintains the temperature about 200 degrees and then we take it out so we have hot food to eat after our prayer services are done.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the board? See none. Thank you, Mr. Fink.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Koolang. So I would call the planner, John Chadwick.
Yeah, I'll take this one, I'll take the other one.
Mr. Chadwick, if you would raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
And state your full name for the record, sir.
Name is John Chadwick, C H A D W I C K.
And Mr. Chadwick, I know you've appeared prior to this, before this board. If you could just please give a brief summary of your background qualifications?
Yes, I have. My license is in good standing and have been practicing providing professional planning services to private individuals, private companies or entities and municipalities for quite some time.
Technical term?
Yes.
Okay, we'll accept you. Thank you.
Mr. Chadwick. Mr. McDowell and I are probably in a tie.
Mr. Chadwick, if you could please explain the positive and negative criteria to the board and if you could also go into the parking issue, which was a couple of the board members have asked about.
Yeah, the, the playing question of course is, is overriding is the, whether there's enough parking and the, you've had testimony all evening now on how this congregation operates. There's nobody driving to the facility when the main services take place. During the week, there is a small portion of the membership that come and they could drive there or walk there depending on their location. My assessment of this, having seen the operation because they're there now and having dealt with similar congregations that are orthodox, that have absolute prohibition, prohibiting driving or driving a car on the Sabbath, I think there's more than adequate parking. And it goes to the rabbi's testimony of how many people attend these small sessions, whatever their purpose might be during the week. It's already been stated that the number of the congregation live close and will walk anyway. And there's talking about somewhere's around 15 people, so even with that, the parking is more than adequate. But come back to the, come back to the proposal, it's a old tired building. It's not adequate for their needs now and it's been demonstrated through the architect to be vastly improved, a street appearance and Campbell Street roadside as well. That goes to, this is inherently beneficial, you've heard that term night after night. We don't have to prove any positive benefits with by the nature of what we are, we advance the purposes of municipal and use law. What you go to is, is there something in this application that outweighs the public benefits that are derived? I see positive benefit on all the major categories. The appearance of the building clearly is much, much, much more attractive than what is current. It will result in correcting a dangerous situation where the parking is currently and backing out into Campbell Street right at the intersection. That'll be eliminated. There's no stormwater management. There's no stormwater management whatsoever at the site and there will be. And the overall site itself, in terms of both landscaping and fencing, will be an extremely attractive site. So my judgment, when you weigh the negatives and the positives, it's all positive. You go through other, we have other variances, some are pre-existing. The coverage variance is to allow for the expansion, but the site clearly can accommodate it. And all the other variances that are associated with it either are negligible or existing. I don't believe there's anything that is overwhelming to this project and the site is that. By judgment, it meets the standards of the municipal land use law. It meets the standards outlined under the lead case, which is the CK case on inherently beneficial use. And it warrants your approval.
Does the board have any questions, Mr. Chadwick?
Is not a time to bring up the overflow parking that Mr. Ayat brought up?
Well, the, the overflow, I mean, any of the churches, synagogues, temples in town, the high holidays, it's an overflow, no matter where you are. Is there available overflow parking in the vicinity of this facility? Yes, there is. Have they made concrete arrangements? No, they haven't because they haven't had the overflow at this junction. Now, would they in the future with the expanded facility? Your guess is as good as mine, but the fact is, there is area that can accommodate it, not just on the streets. And with, you know, within close proximity, not some distance away.
Also points out, excuse me, that the high holidays are only, where all those people come, it's only three days, three days a year.
So during the week, your general, your services, the parking will be mostly confined to the nine spots, 11 spots that you have on the parking lot?
Right, right, the rabbi already testified that the nine that are currently there have been sufficient. So certainly 11, at least for the foreseeable future, with the board to grant this application would, would be sufficient.
Good. I have no further questions, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ayat. Board have any other questions, Mr. Chadwick? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick.
Do you have any other witnesses, counsel?
No other witnesses at this time. I would, when it's the appropriate time, we have one person from the public who I would ask to testify.
Okay, well, that leads us right in. So we will now go out to the public, anyone within 200 feet of subject site wanting to be heard. If you're within 200 feet of subject site, you receive the notice via certified mail. Seeing none, we'll go outside of 200 feet, anyone from the public wanting to be heard.
Okay, I would ask Mr. Frisch to step up.
Sir, you can be at the podium, sir.
So you can go. That microphone over there, Joe.
If you would raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
And state your full name, just pull the microphone closer, state your full name and provide your address.
Joseph Frish, 56 Campbell Avenue. I live eight houses away from the synagogue, roughly a three-minute walk. I'm one of the walkers that you keep mentioning. And then generally I walk 90% of the time, even on weekdays, unless it's really cold like last week. And I think it'd be a good addition to the neighborhood. The current building is fairly dated, not that attractive. And this addition would be an enhancement to the quarter. Thank you. F R I S H.
Great, thank you very much, sir. Anyone else with, outside of 200 feet wanting to be heard? Anyone else with outside of 200 feet wanting to be heard? Can I get a motion to close the public portion? Oh, I'm sorry. Did somebody want to speak?
Sir, would you raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
And please state your full name and your address.
Spencer Rockman, 33 Stone Street, Edison.
Mr. Rockman, have you received? You may proceed.
Okay, I'm not sure of some of the thoughts that were already shared, but I will say that because Abba Israel accommodates a, an Orthodox clientele, so to speak, everyone walks. So if you have 100% participation, you're going to have probably close to 100% people walking. So in terms of parking, it doesn't become a stress. Just wanted to like add that thought or reinforce that thought.
And how far from the synagogue do you live?
Let's see, Mineola, from Route 27, we have Mineola and then Stone and Campbell, the corner of Stone and Campbell. A lot of times I run, but it's okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rockman.
Thank you.
Sometimes you take a soccer ball and dribble the soccer ball down. I know, because you taught my kids how to play soccer.
I, I almost made a comment like that, Mr. Chairman, but I know you have another application coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Rockman.
You're a well-known soccer coach in that area, I have to say.
Anyone outside of 200 feet wanting to be heard? Last call. Can I get a motion to close the public portion?
Motion to close public session.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chairman O'Gorman, seconded by Mr. Patel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, the ayes have it. Public portion is now closed. Mr. Fink, if you would like to do a summation and then also just to remind you, we do, we have five board members here present. So it's your decision if you want to roll for a vote tonight or hold off for another evening.
No, I would proceed. I think the testimony has been clear, I'm not going to spend much time providing a summation, but it seems the biggest issue is the parking. And I think there's been ample testimony from both the rabbi and Mr. Rockman and comments by the experts that the parking is, the parking is sufficient under the circumstances, notwithstanding the technical requirements, given the testimony that this is a walking synagogue and that there's, so that on the Jewish holidays and the Sabbath in the afternoon, people are overwhelmingly walking and there's sufficient parking, even with nine spaces currently for the beginning of the holidays and Sabbaths in the evenings. And then during the weekday mornings, there's definitely no issue because it's significantly lower attendance, 10 to 15 people. And a decent portion of those people also walk. So with that, I would conclude and respectfully request that the board approve the application.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Fink. We'll go now go to the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairman.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application. Houses of worship, because they facilitate the free exercise of religion, are considered inherently beneficial use in New Jersey and they are assumed to satisfy, satisfy the positive criteria required for granting of the variance. The negative was the parking and the testimony supported it in reference to this synagogue being a walking. In addition, the appearance will be approved, the safety for the parking will be approved, the stormwater management will be improved. And also the, the function there will be learning session, social events and a prayer session. During the week, it'll be roughly 10 to 15 people with sessions in the morning and the afternoon and the same on the weekends. That's it. I'm sorry, and, and also you'll comply with everything in the Bignell Planning Consultants Report and also the Delaware Raritan Engineering Reports.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chairman O'Gorman, seconded by Mr. Sadada, roll call, please.
Mr. Chabra?
Yes, the motion.
Mr. Patel?
Yes, on the motion.
Mr. Sadarha?
Yes, to the motion.
Vice Chair O'Gorman?
Yes, on the motion.
And Chairman Kumba?
Yes, on the motion. You're in unanimous approval, congratulations. Good luck. We're going to take a five-minute recess to give the court reporter an opportunity to rest her fingers before we go to the next case. I will return to session. Madam Secretary, next case on the agenda, please.
Case number Z 17 2022, Bola Oil Corporation at 386 Route 1. Applicant is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and seeking bulk and use variances for retail store and fuel sale. Standards have not been met in accordance with the master plan. Existing fuel service station is not a permitted use in the RB zone. Max impervious coverage required is 40%, proposed is 65%. Side yard setback required is six feet, proposed zero feet in the RB zone. Affected property is located in both GBH and RB zone. Designated as block number 240, lot number 1.02 on the Edison Township tax map. All noticing paperwork is in order.
Good evening, Mr. Tuvell.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Happy New Year. Jason Tuvell, attorney for the applicant. The application was before the board on, at its December 17th, 2024 meeting. At that meeting, we presented testimony from our civil engineer as well as our traffic engineer just to reorient the board to the project. It's an existing fuel station located at the property with a motor vehicle service station, basically a garage. The application proposes to refit the existing. The application proposes to refit the existing building, so the building on site is not being enlarged in any way, shape, or form with a retail store. We are reducing impervious coverage on the site. We are enhancing the landscaping, stormwater management, lighting on the property. What, the reason that we're before the board, since the use is permitted in the GB zone, is that a small portion of the property is located in the RB zone. However, what I'll say is, nothing about that area is changing. In fact, we're actually enhancing the buffer there. We're enhancing the fencing there and lighting and landscaping as well. The one issue that came up at the last meeting that I felt that the applicant needed to address was the fact that we did have a variance for high-speed diesel. If the board recalls, that was probably the biggest issue that was discussed with the applicant at that meeting. Since then, we submitted a revised memorandum to the board that we would be removing the high-speed diesel from the application. So there is no longer high-speed diesel proposed with this application. So the only D variance that we have is the fact that a portion of the property which exists today is in the RB district. But again, we are reducing the improvement area in that location. So, Mr. Chairman, today I have one witness that I plan on calling, our professional planner, Matt Sekler from Stonefield Engineering and Design. He did not testify at the last meeting, so we should swear him in and qualify him. And he will go through the planning proofs for the variance relief being sought.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth now, if you got?
Yes, I do.
And state your full name for the record.
My name is Matthew Sekler. That's S E C K L E R. I'm with Stonefield Engineering Design, address is ninety-two Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Mr. Sekler, if you could give the board the benefit of a summary of your background qualifications.
Certainly. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Union College. I have a Master's in City Regional Planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional planner and professional engineer in the state. Been accepted before a hundred boards as a planner and over a hundred and fifty as an engineer.
And your license is current and in good standing?
Yes.
We'll accept. You may proceed.
Thank you.
So, Matt, in preparation of this application, you visited the site and the surrounding area?
Correct.
And you reviewed all the plans and application materials that have been put forth before the board?
Yes.
And you've also analyzed the relevant sections of the master plan for the Township of Edison, as well as the applicable sections of the zoning code?
Correct.
Okay. So why don't we get started, just kind of reorienting the board to the site from a zoning perspective, specifically focusing on the fact that the property is split-zoned?
Correct. And I'm going to call back up A one, which was previously marked. It was an aerial exhibit. Just to remind the board, I know it's probably very difficult to see from up there. We've outlined the site in yellow. This is, again, the site at the corner of Route One, heading northbound in Russell Avenue. The site is triangular and has two front yards, the Russell Avenue front yard and the Route One front yard. And there's a portion of the site a little less than seventy-five hundred square feet. It's about twenty-two percent of the total lot area that is in the RB zone. That is generally a rectangular portion of the property that fronts off of Russell Avenue. And that is part of this application, is that because we are a split-zone lot, we are seeking a D-one use variance for the convenience store and gas fueling area that, that is generally on the, the larger lot, the larger portion of the lot that is the GBH zone. Again, in the current condition, in the RB zone is a portion of the repair facility and pavement that is utilized for parking and circulation, as well as vegetation and trees that are within the RB zone. So currently today, there's a portion of the building and drive aisles and parking spaces. And what you'll see when I flip this board over and go back to A two, which was the colorized rendering, what we've done is we've eliminated some of the pavement. We're actually reduced about fifteen percent of the impervious coverage or built, built use within the RB zone. But we still will be seeking a use variance because there is a, maybe about one-eighth of the handicap ADA parking stall that's in the RB zone and a small corner of the building that is within the RB zone. To note, the access to the building where customers would come in and out, that maintains within the business zone. So really, in terms of any type of activity that is being drawn or brought about into the RB zone, it's very, very minimal. Again, de minimis, really a small portion of an ADA parking space and a small portion of the building in the corner of the building is in the RB zone. That is why we are seeking the D-one use variance. There's also, your RB zone actually does allow, your residential zone does allow for off-street parking, supporting the business zone, business district. So we did, I believe, notice for that conditional use standard, we do not meet all the conditions for having parking in the residential zone. The one condition we cannot comply with is related to the buffer area. We are not buring it up because we have existing trees. And if we were to berm up the existing ground, it could damage the existing trees and we'd lose that existing vegetation that is along the back of the property.
And Matt, as part of the application, we agreed to comply and already have integrated the landscaping comments that the board planner had recommended, correct?
Correct. And I think we've also agreed to eliminate any type of lighting waivers as it relates to the areas near the buffer. I believe the only waiver we have for lighting that remains is under the gas canopy itself. Again, there are levels of lighting that is required under the gas canopy because you need to have safe transactions, both in terms of vehicular pedestrian interaction between the workers and the people driving in here, but also people doing any type of cash or credit card transactions. You want to have proper lighting under the canopy. But we are complying with all the lighting levels as it relates to our property and the adjoining residential properties around us. I do want to also mention, we are moving the parking spaces that back up towards the residential zone of residential properties further away from the property line. We are enhancing the vegetation. Right now, there's a three-foot fence that's generally in disrepair around the back of the property. We are replacing that with an eight-foot-high fence. So in terms of the interaction between the proposed development and the residential properties that surround the site, we are, we do believe we're enhancing the buffer and helping separate the permitted use within the business zone and the residential uses that surround us. We do think we're making a number of improvements to the site. In addition, we are narrowing the driveway along Russell Avenue. That's an improvement from a safety and traffic perspective. Reducing the overall impervious coverage on the site. So that's an improvement from an environmental perspective. And as I mentioned, really, and we've also reduced the impervious coverage that's actually within the residential zone itself by about fifteen percent. You've heard from counsel, the one, I'd say, major change that we've seen from the application was here before, at the last hearing to today, is we removed the high-flow diesel. So again, that also eliminated a variance. But also, as part of that removal, we do believe that we've addressed a number of the board's concerns as it related to queuing and circulation as it related to trucks. So that is, I think, a benefit that we, the applicant has heard, the concerns of the board, and removed the high-flow diesel, high-speed diesel from this application. In terms of signage, we are going to comply with all of the signage requirements on the canopy in the building itself. There's an existing non-conformity for the existing freestanding sign. We're looking to keep that freestanding sign, just reface it. You know, new logos, new pricing indications, but maintain that pre-existing non-conformity. There's also a number of setback variances that the site currently has in its existing condition. We are either maintaining that or making those setbacks better as parts of the application. So there's no setbacks as it relates to the canopy and building that we are worsening with this. We're only making them better or maintaining them. And again, this site has, you know, some design constraints as it relates to the fact that it is a corner lot. So you have two front yards. You have a split-zone residential zone and business zone. So trying to find the right uses that mix with both those can be difficult. But we believe we found that, that really having no activity or no business activity really being in the residential zone itself and keeping all the activity within the business zone.
And not only having, not having activity in the residential zone, but reducing the activity that exists today?
Correct. We've reduced the activity by reducing the amount of impervious coverage in the residential zone, as well as reducing the light levels and increasing the landscaping and buffering in that area. So overall, again, this application, we did look at it from a D-one perspective as it relates to being a non-permitted use. Again, there is somewhat of a hardship, the fact that it is split-zoned. This one lot does live its life in both a residential zone and a business zone. But we did also evaluate this, determined if there's any significant negative impacts to the zone plan or master plan. We actually found that your master plan speaks to enhancing or improving businesses along the Route One corridor. We think we've done that here with the enhanced landscaping, enhanced trees that are being added, the reducing impervious coverage and the refacing of the property. So we do believe that we're actually advancing goals and purposes of your master plan. In addition, we don't believe that we are significantly impacting your zoning ordinance with this application. We do believe that we are advancing purposes H and I with this application. We are, again, improving the visual environment of the building and the grounds itself. We're also improving the free flow of traffic by reducing the driveway width along Russell Avenue, helping, you know, direct and maintain the traffic flow along Route One. And again, by reducing the driveway width on Russell Avenue, it helps reduce the amount of traffic that would use Russell Avenue and provide a more organized manner. We also provided the appropriate amount of parking on site, which again also helps with the free flow of traffic. So overall, I do believe that this application for the D-one variance and the D-three variance as it relates to having the fueling station with the convenience store in the residential district. And again, it's just minimally within the residential district, can be granted based, based upon the Medici standards.
All right. So let's just break down the Medici standards, Matt, a little bit more. From a particular suitability and special reasons perspective, do you believe that the site, that that small portion of the residential zone that incorporates the property is particularly suited for the, you know, corner of the building and very small part of a parking, ADA parking space that's located in the zone?
Yes, we do. Yes, I do believe it's particularly suited. Again, it currently has a portion of the building in that area today. We're reducing the amount of improvements in that area. And I think that this, this area of the site, the residential area, we're maintaining a significant amount of vegetation and then increasing the amount of vegetation. So the fact you're able to utilize the majority of that residential property, residentially-zoned portion of the property for buffering landscaping, I think, is an improvement with this application.
And if that lot was developed separately, there could be a structure on that property, whereas now it's going to be mainly used for buffering?
Correct. If you were to subdivide this lot, the residential portion off, you'd be able to put a single-family house much closer, much taller, with a lot more impervious coverage to the neighboring properties than what we have here, which is a corner of a building and about an eighth of a parking, an ADA parking space.
All right. So now, as to the negative criteria, do you see any, any issues with respect to parking or traffic as it relates to that small corner of the building and parking space in the residential zone?
No, again, there's no reason for any vehicular or even pedestrian access for customers in the rear of the building. And again, it's only a very small portion of the ADA stall that's within that residential portion. And again, that ADA stall is located, so it becomes easy access to the, to the commercial building. And that is why it needs to be located where it is located.
All right. And then I'm just sticking to typical things that the board may view as part of the negative criteria, substantial detriment to the public good. Do you see any visual impacts based on what we're proposing? Do you think that there's a benefit over what exists today?
Yes, there's enhanced landscaping over what's out there today. Again, the building is further away than what a permitted residential building can be to the neighboring properties. Again, lighting, zero light levels at all the property, edges of the property as it relates to the residential portions of the site. So again, there is no negative visual impacts.
And as to lighting as well, all the lighting will be new LED cutoff fixtures, correct?
Correct.
Versus what exists today, which is maybe some older fixtures that aren't as preferable for neighboring properties?
Correct. Much more controlled lighting with the proposed lightings that we, that we proposed for this application.
All right. As it relates to stormwater management, do you see any negative impacts to the surrounding area?
No. In fact, we are improving stormwater by reducing the amount of impervious coverage on the property. In addition, we are adding some stormwater facilities on the site to help intercept the water before it reaches Route One.
So there's a reduction in overall impervious coverage for the whole property, correct?
Correct.
And there's a reduction of, of impervious coverage in the residential zone as well?
Yes, about fifteen percent reduction in the impervious coverage in the residential property.
All right. In addition to just other stormwater facilities being added?
Correct.
Okay. And then with respect to architectural, architecturally, do the improvements to the exterior of the building, as well as the, you know, the signage, further purpose I to promote a desirable visual environment?
Yes, I do believe it does. Again, you're seeing a significant facelift and investment to the, the building and the property itself with the vegetation as part of the application.
All right. And then in terms of substantial impairment to the zone plan or zone ordinance, does the fact that this use is permitted on a vast majority of the property, go to your analysis with respect to that?
Correct. Again, seventy-eight percent of the property allows for this type of use and this intensity of use. And we're basically not using a significant portion of that twenty-two percent of the property that, that use is not permitted.
Right. So I was going to ask you, is the fact that there's a negligible amount of, of square footage of the building and a parking space in the RB zone, does that play into your analysis of whether there's a substantial impairment to the zone plan or zone ordinance?
Correct. I do not believe there's a substantial impairment. Again, if we took this building and we moved it primarily within the residential zone or had drive aisles or access points to the building that had commercial activity in the residential zone, I would not be able to say that there's not a substantial impact. Here, it's a corner of a building and a portion of an ADA parking stall. I don't see that being a substantial impact to the residential zone plan.
Okay. And then just going back to, I think, I know we talked about it briefly, but in addition to the large buffer and landscaping that you indicated we would implement, there was also an eight-foot fence that we're adding along the property line as well, correct?
Actually, it's within our property, so there's a significant buffer between the fence line and the residential neighbors. So it's not like the residential neighbors will see a fence line and they won't get to appreciate the vegetation. The fence line is pushed in within the site itself more, so that the, there's more natural vegetation between our property and the neighbor.
Okay. And I believe the civil engineer testified to this, but just if you could reiterate it as the planner, the applicant will agree to comply with all, with all the comments that have been set forth, if not done so already, by the board planner and board engineer?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman, from Mr. Sekler.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Mr. Sekler?
Mr. Chair, have a question?
Mr. Chabra? So currently, in your letter, it says that the two proposed existing high-speed diesel pumps are being transitioned into low speed. How many more pumps are there going to be in total for diesel?
So it'll still be, those two pumps will just be converted to low-speed diesel?
Okay. And how many fuel heads, dispensers are you having on this property?
How many vehicles could fuel at one time?
Correct. That's where I'm going at.
Yes. So you'd be able to fuel generally six vehicles, sorry, twelve vehicles at one time, but because the diesel pumps are kind of in between, it's, you're not going to be able to likely fill up all four in a row based on the spacing. Unless you have a really small diesel car, you will not be able to have a diesel and the adjoining unleaded fuel at the same time.
Okay. Because, yeah, so currently, right now, there's three dual, correct me if I'm wrong, three dual dispensers, right? So that's six cars can fuel up right now without any diesel?
Correct.
And with this proposal, it'd be twelve regular vehicles plus the two diesel dispensers?
Correct.
Now, what's going to stop a, you know, twenty-six-foot Penske or U-Haul truck from refueling the diesel here?
Again, they, a small truck or performance vehicle, I mean, I think like Volkswagen, BMW, they have some diesel performance. A, you know, Penske truck, they can circulate and fuel at that time. If they would fuel, they basically would occupy the diesel position and the position that's basically behind it. So that would, that's why you can't really have any more than, you know, three vehicles in a row if one of them is a Penske truck, as you mentioned.
Yeah. And the low-speed diesel is permitted. That's why we, we, the high-speed diesel is what creates a variance under your ordinance. The low-speed diesel, which we're proposing, is now permitted. So the applicant could even install that today if they, if they chose on the existing site. But I, I've, just speaking from experience regarding these types of projects like, we would agree as a condition, because the goal here is not to have, because we understood the board's concern, similar to what you're raising now, is we would not fuel tractor-trailers at this location. That would not be permitted based on what we're proposing.
So I understand you can use low-speed diesel, but I also understand that you're doubling the capacity of the existing gas station. So doubling the capacity, adding a convenience store, obviously bringing in more influx of people. Now, if the rear vehicle is filling up with regular gas or premium gas, gasoline, and now there's a twenty-six-foot Penske that's in line for this, now you're going to back up traffic onto Route One. That was my whole discussion.
Well, I think that's the benefit of having multiple dispensers that have diesel. So if, let's say the first vehicle at the, let's say, the northernmost spot is, is filled up, you know, with a, with a passenger car, there is another, a Penske vehicle can circulate to the southern side of the canopy or through the middle of the canopy and get the diesel in those locations as well. in those locations as well.
Okay. So there's two, but there's two dispensers and they can go left and right?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And the way the current plan is, it's accessible for a truck that's 26-foot long to maneuver through that traffic?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Just to follow up on Mr. Chubb's question, so in terms of you stated no tractor-trailers, would you agree if so approved to signage stating no tractor-trailers?
Yes.
Okay. Would you also train your staff to not service tractor-trailers?
Yes. And I believe either it was this board or the planning board impose that condition on the Wawa on Route 1 as well.
That was, that was a planning board that had the pleasure of that one.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I mean, just so you know, I mean, if there's, if, if, if the gentleman down the end of the dais says he's driving by, not you, Shum, Ayat, if he's driving by and he sees a tractor-trailer in there, he's not going to be happy.
Yeah. We, after the last hearing, I spoke to the client about the board's concern regarding the high-speed diesel, and he understands that that was, you know, he wants to upgrade the site. It obviously is in need of disrepair. He's owned it for, for not a long time, and he wants to, you know, transition into a better station. So he understood that and was fine with that being implemented as a condition.
Great. We appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Sekler? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tuvel?
That, that concludes our case.
Okay. All right. So we will now go to the public. Anyone within 200 feet of subject site wanting to be heard? If you're within 200 feet of subject site, you received a notice via certified mail.
Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I will.
Okay. Pull the microphone closer, state your full name for the record, and provide your address.
Okay. My name is Sahil Bangar. Forty, my address-
Hold on, hold on. Slow down. Sahil what?
Sahil Bangar. S-A-H-I-L.
Last name?
Last name B-A-N-G-A-R.
Address?
Forty-six Russell Avenue, Edison, New Jersey.
And just to confirm, you're within 200 feet?
Right. I'm, I'm right next door, right behind the gas station.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
All right. So my, I got a couple of concerns. The gas delivery, that's seven to seven. Well, you know, the gas always comes two in the morning, four in the morning, five in the morning. It's always off time. And the lightning under the canopy, it's LED light, it's too bright, it's always coming through the windows. And the, you know, whenever the, the, you know, delivery come, he never turns off his engine. And, you know, it's all, he's there for like 30, 40 minutes, it's always running, the truck is always running. And, you know, he didn't mention eight-foot fencing? If, you know, 12, 12-foot fence, it's, you know, it will block off some lightning, that'll be better.
Do you want me to address that, Mr. Chairman?
If he's, if he's done, I just don't want you to mess with his clock.
No, sure. If you're still going, go ahead.
I, I got a couple of-
Okay, good.
So high-speed diesel is removed, but you guys still got diesel on the site. But diesel engine does make a lot of noise. You know, you know, it will make a lot of noise during nighttime, daytime. They do about two loads a day of a gas, and so that, this gas station is way busier, and the traffic is always backed up during the summertime to the Route 1. And if, if there's diesel on, on the station, yeah, I mean, you would expect a couple of trucks pull in and, and the traffic would be backed up all the way to Route 1. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Tuvel?
Sure. So we testified to what the delivery hours would be at the last meeting. So unlike today, where I guess you, you have, you know, pre-existing station for quite some time, if the board were to approve the application, the conditions of our delivery times would be part of the approval, and we'd have to abide by those. And I'll ask Mr. Sekler, just to reiterate what those times were, Matt, if you have them.
I believe they were seven to seven?
Yeah. So that's, we'd have to comply with what the board, which, which, which limitation does not exist today. From an idling perspective, I don't believe the trucks are allowed to idle. That's a state law, so that's something, not really within the jurisdiction of the board, but we're happy to put up signs that say no idling, and we'll, I'll speak to the client if there is an issue. I don't know if that's correct or not correct, but assuming that that has occurred, that would be something that we would have to comply with. It wouldn't really be a zoning board issue, it would be more of a, of an enforcement issue, but we would be happy to comply with that, as I believe we have to. The diesel, again, the low-flow diesel is permitted by, by the ordinance. So I, you know, it is permitted, the majority of the property is located within the GB zone, where everything that we're proposing is, is allowed from a use perspective. The 12-foot fence, I leave that up to Mr. Bignell and Mr. Carley's office. From what I always hear at these meetings about high fences, they become susceptible to wind as an issue. So I know it sounds, oh, just make the fence a little bit higher. So I don't think the applicant would have an objection to it, but my understanding is typically, the higher you put a fence, sometimes the wind gets to it. So that's why we felt that substantial evergreen buffering was the way to go here, to ensure that there was proper buffering, which doesn't exist today, between the residential zone and this property. And Matt, those, those trees that we're proposing along those, the property line, they would, they would grow substantially even beyond 12 feet, correct?
Correct. And I, I don't know where the residence property is, but we do have existing vegetation that enhances vegetation that's being added, basically around the Russell Avenue and residential buffer in the rear. Also, the way that the existing canopy is, I believe that the lights are a little lower than the canopy itself versus them being inset. So it's possible that right now, lighting is seen because the lights kind of hang, hang down from the, from the bottom of the canopy versus in the proposed condition where it'll be inset, which will help prevent being able to see the light sources themselves. Plus the building, and again, all the vegetation around it would help shield any type of lighting on the site.
Yeah. So we're improving, like, we tried to test, which explained through testimony, the lighting condition on the site will be substantially enhanced for the better for the public as a result of upgrading the property. But I leave it to Mr. Bignell or Mr. Carley's office on the fence issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bignell?
The ordinance requires-
Sekler, can you turn that microphone off?
Yeah.
Okay. Somebody, okay. So did I, sorry. Mr. Bignell, I apologize.
No problem. The, the ordinance requires that when a commercial operation is next to a residential, that an eight-foot fence be installed. So I don't think you want to go 12-foot, that's, that's too high. Eight-foot, so eight-footer will do it, along with the landscaping if the board chooses to.
And having, having reviewed the growth plan, do you think that is suitable?
Yes, I think he's done a pretty good job with the buffer. I do understand the objectors' concern, and I, I knew he, he was going to be here this evening. So, you know, I, I think that the delivery has to be locked into a condition of approval, so it's not during, you know, evening hours.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And again, there's gas being delivered there today. As a result of coming to the board, we can, you know, make sure that there's a time limitation on that, and the applicant has testified to that.
I would also just briefly talk about the grading of the site. Right now, and again, I don't know if this is the objector's property of, along Russell Avenue, this sits at around elevation 113. Our fence is going to be about elevation 118. So our fence is going to be about five feet higher just from natural, just from how we're grading, and then we have the eight-foot high fence on top.
So it starts five feet higher? The fence starts five feet higher and then goes up?
Compared to the property on Russell Avenue, yes.
Okay.
All right. I mean, anything on a diesel, because, I mean, it's going to make a lot of noise during the nighttime, and, you know, I mean, people are, my neighbors are sleeping in nighttime, you know, everybody sleeps at night, so, I mean.
So as, as Mr. Tuvel said, diesel is permitted, permitted within the zone. So it's not that we're granting a variance, so it's, it's beyond, it's beyond our, our control.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Gorman? Sir? Go back up for a second.
Did, did they address your concerns about the lighting and the delivery time?
Well, the lightning, if the canopy, like you said about the canopy or stuff, I think if you, if you guys raise up the fence, recently they built a Taco Bell near my house, they, they do have a 12-feet fence. Well, it would be nice to block off some lightning, you know, if, if, if 12 feet.
Yeah. Again, I leave that up to the professionals. So if, if Mr. Bignell thinks, you know, he's indicated an eight-foot fence with the landscaping was appropriate, but again, we're, the applicant's willing to work on that with the board professionals to ensure they, they find it to be suitable.
Mr. Chairman, if the, if the grade is already five feet high and you're adding another eight foot to that, that's 13-foot, but I will be more than glad to go out and, and check the site and make sure that that gentleman's concerns are, are taken care of with a, with a larger fence. If you want to write that into the conditions of approval, we'll certainly do that before we sign off.
Okay.
All right?
Are you satisfied with that?
Well, if he's willing to take a look at, go on a site and willing to take a look, then yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And everything else, your concerns have been addressed?
And also one more thing, they, the bathroom never works. So they, you know, they use the bathroom right outside every customer.
The, the good news is, I mean, again, with the upgrade of the site, I mean, I'm sure it's an older building and it's been there for a while. When the applicant purchased it, you'll have a brand-new building with restrooms on the inside that have to meet code, I'm assuming, and that'll be, that'll, that'll be better than it is today as well.
There's also going to be a restaurant, so the, the bathroom's going to have to be a working bathroom, so as to allow for, to meet the health regulations for working bathroom.
Well, yeah. I mean, Bola, he been there for, since 2021. I, I would assume he would fix it ever since he bought the gas station, but he actually never did.
Okay. All right. And then Mr. Tuvel, you're willing, your client's willing to allow Mr. Bignell on the, Bignell on the site to review, to check out the fence?
Oh, yeah, of course. We're happy to work with the board's professionals on that, that's fine.
Excellent. Okay. Anyone else, when outside 200 feet, wanting to be heard? Sir?
Sir, raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Yes, I do, yeah.
And you state your, pull the microphone close enough, state your full name and your address.
Yes. I'm Mohamed Junaiden, M-O-H-A-M-E-D. Last name is Junaiden, J-U-N-A-I-D-E-N. I'm 40, Russell Avenue, Edison, New Jersey. Forty, four-zero.
What street? I just want to make sure.
Russell Avenue.
Can you bring the microphone closer to you, sir?
Sorry. Forty, Russell Avenue.
Oh, okay.
Exactly right behind the gas station.
Okay.
Almost, I'm over there like 13, 14 years right now. Now, a couple of years are busy at that gas station. When enter the gas station, Route 1, when coming for the Route 1 north, they enter, they're all the lights and everything coming to my window completely, everything for that. I have a grandkids. Sometime, when busy time, morning and evening, everybody making horn and everything, then it's a lot of traffic coming. After, then, if they start for the, again, for the, for the diesel or something, so and again, you know, there's a truck make a horn and everything, we cannot sleep and everything, you know, that, sometime this is going to be happen to us. Right now also, it's a lot of busy, still we are, you know, going like that after the remove, at the gas and fuel diesel and everything, again, it'll be tough to us, right?
So, so, I'm sorry, you finished? I'm sorry.
Yes.
I just wanted, Matt, can you just, the headlight issue, we're improving that significantly over what exists today, correct?
Correct. Currently, there is a three-foot-high split rail fence, which basically is just two wooden posts that you could see right through, that separate our property or our development from the other properties on Russell Avenue. We're going to be replacing that with an eight-foot-high solid fence, board-on-board. So any headlights coming in from, I think you're saying people that are coming in from Route 1, what, they would basically either shining, they either hit the building, the headlights, or they would hit the eight-foot-high fence that would be solid and it wouldn't be able to shine through. So I don't believe that under the proposed condition, you're going to have the same headlight issue that you may be having today.
And in addition to the, to the, to the fence, which is solid and, which is opaque, so you can't see through it, you're also going to have evergreen plantings between the property line and that fence?
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
When they are parked the car, they say exactly you're parking, parking the car exactly in my home, the face to my home.
Right. So we're, so, yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. We're eliminating that. So, so that'll be, so that'll, Matt, if you could just explain that a little bit better too?
What about the noises, you know, sort of noises coming, you know?
Yeah. I mean, look, we're not going to-
You know, I, I have grandkids, you know, two kids and everything, because sometimes they're sleeping all the time, it's a problem, you know?
I understand. I think that's why the applicant and also the board professionals, when they reviewed the application, went at great lengths to ensure that the buffering and the fencing along the residential property line was robust and significant.
During them, sometime, you know, trucks guys, you know, make a horn or something, you know, you know, we have to go to work, and kids are sleeping in the home, that's a little bit here.
Anything else to add, sir?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else with, within 200 feet of subject property wanting to be heard?